Good evening, this is the meeting of the Tri-Creek School Board of Trustees. It's called order. Welcome, thank you for coming out tonight. Please rise for pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Father who wishes to stand one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any deletions or additions to the agenda? No changes, we'll get her started here. School spotlight tonight, tonight's school spotlight will shine on Oak Hill Elementary School. Principal Muha, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, we're looking forward to speaking with you today. Thank you for coming. Tonight, we want to share Oak Hill's points of pride with you. My name is Brandy Muha, I am the principal at Oak Hill Elementary School. And with me today, I have three lovely ladies. I have Mrs. Allison Byrd, who is our student support advisor. Mrs. Teresa Patravito, our dean of students. And Mrs. Sam Gill, she is our Title I teacher and MTSS coordinator. Please turn your attention to the screen for an introduction to our points of pride.
Respectful, hardworking, diligent, who was responsible every day for my actions for every schoolwork and every single day. I am the level of my own, I am the best that I can be. I got what I do, it was all up to me.
As you can tell from our introduction video, our biggest point of pride at Oak Hill is our students. To give you a sense of who our student body consists of, I thought I would share some data with you. We have a current enrollment of 559 students in grades K through 5. Last year, we had an enrollment of 517 students. Eighteen percent of our current enrolled students are identified as students with special education services. That means we have 100 students who are identified with disabilities ranging from autism spectrum disorder, visual impairment, emotional disability, and cognitive disabilities. We are proud to house two life skills classrooms at our school. We have 18 students who have final four plans. We have nine students whose primary language is Spanish. But beyond our identified students, we have students who have had missed opportunities due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This is my second year at Oak Hill, and last year, we immediately got to work once we identified that there were many students who did not receive supports. We saw and continue to see escalated behaviors, students struggling to engage in their learning with lack of productivity, and anxiety to name a few. We knew as a school team, we had big rocks to move, even during the middle of a pandemic. And so I need to figure out how to change the screen. There we go. We are especially proud of positive school-wide implementations that have occurred over the past year and a half. With your permission, we would like to present the board with a list of positive implementations that have been happening at Oak Hill Elementary. Can you be approached? No, thank you. Some of the positive implementations that have been added is our dean of students. Thank you to the board for that. An increase in our tiered academic and behavior strategies, school-wide professional development on different behavior strategies and disabilities for our faculty and staff, and the work we put into building an overall positive school culture that are centered around strong relationships are also what we are most proud of. At Oak Hill, we believe that in order for us to have continued improvement in academic success, we needed to ensure we had a vision and mission that guides us in our daily work and planning. At the beginning of this school year, we spent time as a school community developing our vision and mission. We also created belief statements. The work was empowering and ensuring that our school climate reflects what we stand for and are always working towards. We are also providing the board with a copy of our vision, mission, and belief statements. They are included in the packet that Mrs. Patravito just passed out to you. We also began making a significant shift in three major areas at Oak Hill. For our points of pride, we would like to highlight the three main areas that we are, positively, we feel that they are impacting our students beyond measure. They are multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS, positive behavior intervention and supports, and social-emotional learning. These three programs have been newly implemented and/or revamped over the past year and a half. The changes that have taken place with these three programs have been significant. What is important to again take note of as you listen to the exclamations of these programs is that these were revamped and implemented during the height of the COVID pandemic. The entire faculty and staff took hold of these programs because they knew it was best for our kids. The work has been exciting to see unfold, especially as we work through continued reflection and revision through our plan, do, study, act, thinking. At this time, I invite Mrs. Sam Gill up to share information regarding our MTSS program.
Hi, I'm Samantha Gill, and I'm excited to talk to you guys tonight about how Oak Hill has implemented the MTSS framework and made our goal to maximize growth and ensure success for all of our students. To start with a little background about MTSS, it is designed to identify struggling students early on and provide appropriate supports. The level and intensity of these supports vary across three tiers. It focuses on the whole child and be a brilliant brace that at Oak Hill. Our MTSS plan encompasses academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs. To support Tier One, our plan provides time for our classroom teachers to analyze cohort and classroom data. It also allows time for the teams to discuss instructional and behavioral strategies. As we move to Tier Two, this team here and classroom teachers look at individual student data and begin targeting specific areas for growth. This process tracks goals, interventions, and accommodations over a period of time. As a Title I teacher, I have also shifted how my team and I implement our lessons. For kindergarten through second grade students, we focus on reteaching skills to close those achievement gaps. And third grade through fifth grade, we began pre-teaching those skills so that internet provides them that background information and knowledge needed to feel successful in the classroom. Tier Three is the most intensive. The entire MTSS team, which adds one teacher from each classroom, or sorry, each grade level, and our school psychologists come together to discuss current student data and trends over time. It is amazing to see so many educators working together to help these identified students. Parents are also key members of our team. It's important for us to keep them up to date with those student goals and their progress through the three tiers. Tier Three parent dates were implemented this year, and I'm excited to share that we are actually getting ready to host our second one in just a few weeks. This team approach has been our biggest shift when supporting the whole child. To put this in perspective, one student in Tier Two or Tier Three can have been discussed, strategized, and influenced by a minimum of nine varying staff members. I have photos of a few members of our team in action to share with you guys. Up on the screen, you'll see a classroom teacher working one-on-one with a student. We have a classroom assistant working with a small group, and then there's just one little snapshot of one of my groups working with our title interventions. The, I'm sorry, Oak Hill is continuously increasing the quality of support that is being provided for our students, and I am really proud of the commitment that our staff has taken in implementing this plan. And at this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Teresa Patravito to share with you another layer of support for our students with PBIS.
Thank you. At the beginning of the school year, a lot of our work went into creating a formalized PBIS plan that had not been implemented prior to this year. This includes, I'm sorry, definitions of minor and major misbehaviors along with tiered strategies and supports to address them. So this flowchart here, hold it. There we go. So this flowchart here is just a brief summarization of that PBIS plan that shows the different definitions of what we would categorize as a minor or major misbehavior, along with how Mrs. Byrd and Mrs. Muha and I all worked together to support behaviors, and a few brief supports at each tiered level. We have several programs and supports in place to promote positive behaviors at Oak Hill. At the very core of these systems of supports is our ROCS acronym. These letters stand for respectful, organized, cooperative, kind, and safe. These are the characteristics that we expect all of our Oak Hill Cardinals to exhibit. We use the motto "Our Flag Rocks" as a daily reminder of these expectations and a mantra that our school family can live by daily. The attached behavior matrix here shows examples of how students can show these various characteristics throughout each school setting. We have posters of this very matrix listed throughout the school so that students have those reminders daily, and we review them in detail at the beginning of every year. Cardinal cash is something that all students have an opportunity to earn for displaying these positive characteristics. Any staff member can distribute cardinal cash to a student at any time. Then several times throughout the school year, the cardinal cash card goes around to each classroom, and students can purchase items or opportunities for intangible experiences at the school, such as having lunch with a staff member, or even being principal for the day with the cardinal cash that they have earned. Something to chirp about is a brand-new incentive program that we implemented this year. Each week, staff members are encouraged to nominate students that have stood out throughout the week by going above and beyond their expectations. Two of those students that were nominated are randomly selected for recognition over the PA system. We make a positive phone call home, and they get to come down and sign their name on this wall of fame that we have in the office. Every student that's nominated receives a certificate and sees what they were nominated for and some extra cardinal cash as well. The appreciation station is another new addition to our PBIS plan this year. There is a table set up in the hallway with small pre-made notes of appreciation. Students can stop by first thing in the morning to fill them out, and they give this to a staff member to show their gratitude for them. Along with all of those school-wide strategies, we have several supports in place for groups of students or individuals. We have begun to explore the benefits of implementing peer mentoring strategies in our school. This year, we started formally giving select fifth-grade students opportunities to work in our kindergarten and life skills classrooms. I've shared a few pictures of some of our current fifth-grade peer mentors working on tasks with students from Miss Byrd's life skills class. So far, the feedback from all of the students and the teachers involved has been really positive. I hope to coordinate and learn from the middle school and high school programs to see how we might be able to align some of their principles from their programs into the elementary level going further next year. And lastly, there are many various individualized plans and support systems in place for specific students. These intentional plans are developed and implemented by a teams of staff members to ensure that we're all working together and doing everything that we can to make sure all students are successful. Next, Mrs. Byrd will be coming up to discuss all the great things she is doing to support our students' social and emotional needs.
Hello, I'm Allison Byrd, I'm the student support advisor at Oak Hill, and as a graduate of the Tri-Creek School Corporation, I can attest to the fact that our district has always represented academic excellence, and I know we can reach even greater heights. But how do we do that? We do that by removing the barriers that prevent students from reaching their academic potential. Right now, those barriers are underdeveloped social-emotional skills, and as Dr. Lori DeSautelle says, "Brains in pain cannot learn." When a student cannot regulate their emotions, communicate effectively, or interact with peers positively, that student cannot learn. A strength of our building is the shift in using this MTSS framework to organize not only our academic response to intervention, but our social-emotional learning programming as well. Let me elaborate. Tier One is for all students and includes our Second Step curriculum, which is delivered by our classroom teachers on a weekly basis. Second Step is a research-based program which aligns with CASL, the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning, to teach students topics such as growth mindset, emotion management, empathy, and problem solving. This is our first year using the curriculum and addresses a gap that existed in our Tier One strategies to affect behavior. So far, our teachers and students enjoy the lessons, and we know that it will benefit our students now and well into their futures. Our Tier One also includes the lessons I teach, which focus on social, emotional, college, and career topics. I teach these lessons to all 25 classrooms every month, including our classrooms with students who receive intense interventions. This proactive approach aims to teach students the skills they need before they find themselves in situations where they need those skills. Being proactive is essential to ensuring that students don't fall through the cracks because not all students who struggle are easy to spot or reach out for help. Furthermore, the addition of a dean of students this year prevents me from canceling classroom lessons due to unexpected behavioral issues, which was very common prior to the creation of her position. Our Tier Two includes small group counseling and individual counseling to address issues that are impacting a student's ability to learn. Finally, our Tier Three includes responding to crisis situations, as well as referring students to Crown Counseling or other agencies to address issues that are impacting their education but require more intensive, ongoing therapy. A point of pride at Oak Hill is that Mrs. Muha saw the need to focus on SEL and inspired our staff to see its importance as well. She advocated for our SEL curriculum along with the dean of students and committed to providing training for our staff on these topics to enhance their confidence. Under her leadership, we have moved toward a whole-child approach. The graphics on this slide show the importance of SEL overall, along with the importance of addressing these needs to improve academic success. The first graphic on the left shows the top 10 skills employers want, which directly correlates with many of the skills taught by our SEL curriculum and my lessons. The middle graphic shows the neuroscience behind why a stressed brain can't learn. And the graphic on the right is a quote that summarizes how social-emotional intelligence is the key to unlocking academic potential. It's us. If a child can do advanced math, speak three languages, or receive top grades, but can't manage their emotions, practice conflict resolution, or handle stress, none of that other stuff is really going to matter. And now, back to Mrs. Muha for our final thoughts.
Thank you, Allison. We are proud of our continued work at Oak Hill. We're proud of our science bowl team finishing fifth in the state in their class. We're proud of our robotics team, who will be attending their state competition for the first time since we've had a team that will be on this Saturday at Lucas Oil. We are proud of our accomplishments on state and local assessments, but we are most proud of our community as a whole. We have taken on many challenges to create an environment where relationships and student academic and behavior supports are our primary focus. The trainings and structured programs will continue to help us improve in all areas of schooling. The support staff and teachers at Oak Hill are by far the best that I have ever worked with. Their dedication is top-notch, as you can see from the presentation from these ladies here. We also have parent partnerships that provide feedback, they volunteer, they work with our school by playing a role in ensuring our students are surrounded by adults who believe and live by their common goals. I would also be remiss if I didn't mention those who are not in our building but work with the same student-centered beliefs in mind. The entire central office team who's sitting here, Jay behind the camera there, they are a critical component of our continued success and work at Oak Hill. I know I would not be able to do my job without them. We are not perfect, we still have a lot of our own learning to do, but we are committed to having successful student outcomes. I would like to end by sharing a couple of student testimonials from our kids stating why they love Oak Hill Elementary, and I will tell you, they did not know I was going to ask them to do this, so when I pulled them, it is truly a genuine reaction. You'll see someone who gets a little nervous, someone who said, "Wait a second, I need to write down what I'm going to say," like me. And then you're going to see a couple of kids who just speak from the heart, so I hope you enjoy.
My favorite thing about Oak Hill is I have great friends, great teachers, and a principal.
I love our school because our teachers are very inspiring. We can't do something, our teachers help us a lot. Also, I love our school because everybody's nice and kind. Like, I love that we can go around and build, because I feel like we're gonna make our family look better. And then in the summers, I really like when they go out and have their breakfast and all those, because it's very delicious.
I love using our school fries.
I hope you'll think it's the best place in the world.
I think that the teachers and the principal of Oak Hill are very kind and inspiring and are straight people, and I love being a student of Oak Hill Elementary.
Hello, we love you. We love our school, we are inspiring us so much that we think we can be a better person than we are. While this school thing, we are Oak Hill Elementary, we stand up for ourselves, either for something big or small, we do it anyway because we're Oak Hill. We are good, and we can do anything that is possible. We love this school because we think it's amazing, it's amazing, it's just so great to be here. We live having this school to our selves. We love how our passion inspires us. We love how it makes a great thing to do here. It's like nobody feels like they love this school, but it is love inside our school. We think it's a great community here in, well, in the air.
That is our biggest point of pride, again, and to our kids, and that's what we wanted to end with. But we would like to open the floor for any questions that the board may have for us.
I would like to say that I'm so impressed with what you're doing, and I think it's wonderful. I just love everyone.
Thank you.
So thank you.
It's definitely that team approach, so thank you so much. Any other questions?
Well, we hired a new dean of students for your school, and I got that was very helpful for you guys, so.
It's been more than helpful. In fact, we were talking before we came, and we said, "We couldn't imagine being back down to two in the office," because it's, it's just, I don't, I'm gonna sound like the kids, it's just amazing. It's amazing.
I think it really just enables us to get to more kids and be able to address more needs. A big thing that Mrs. Muha is very passionate about is making sure that our students don't fall through the cracks, and so having Mrs. Patravito in our office and additional person to support kids, it just really allows us to be more preventative and proactive with our students and make sure that we are paying attention to even those really small things that we need to be looking at to help our students and prevent them from being in situations later in life that we don't need to be in.
And I would also add, we were trying to think of how to illustrate to you how many touches a child gets from us through the tiered system. And we couldn't think of a way to really describe it because it's direct or indirect. So when we do the teaming approach, it literally is this entire team here with the classroom teacher, and then we'll say, "Okay, let's pull parent in," and then we'll go even further, and we'll say, walking in the halls, "Hey, contact with this," I mean, so it's all the time, we're always talking about the kids, so it's a true teaming approach with everything that we do. So when we said a minimum of 10 points, it's not just about instruction, it's about the conversations and the planning and the strategies that we are creating for the kids. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much. You're more than welcome to stay for a rest of the meeting, or if you guys want, you guys can sit down.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, the superintendent report?
I am super happy to report that our very own and executive director of business operations, Dana Bogathy, has been honored as the Indiana Association of School Business Officials, or Region One, and she's been named the Region One School Business Official of the Year. So the IASCO Awards Committee will need to determine the statewide recipients who will be honored at the May, May opening, I believe that's in Indianapolis.
Frenchly.
Frenchly. So congratulations, Dana.
Thank you.
Very proud of you.
Well deserved, Dana, well deserved.
Thank you.
Update on the publicity plan, so if you recall, back in November, I presented to the board the publicity plan, had a lot of stretch goals in it, and since that time, we have been moving and grooving on our logo refresh, on our website build, we have acquired Colfax Communications with our messaging of our communications to our community, and so we have modified some of those goals based on a meeting that we just had today. For our website launch, while March or April was the initial target date, after a lot of discussion, we want to take the extra time to really develop out that new website to create good quality video footage, to get good quality photos, to work out the kinks on the back channel, to do some focus groups, and to also get that app up and running. And as a result of all of that, the new target date is July 14th, which then will set the stage for registration in July. So we started basically the new year with a new platform, and hopefully have everything ironed out, ready to go. And Mr. Blackman's over there, he's responsible for a bunch of that work, so. That's that, we have gone through five scenarios with the district logo, we've had some input at our most recent district-wide leadership team meeting, and we're working on working with what we currently have and trying to make some modifications. I think we're getting close to those revisions for an update on our logo. And handbook committee, we've identified representation from the administrative team from the elementary level, middle school, and high school level. I already secured one parent who actually spoke at one of our board meetings about bullying, so they're going to serve on the committee. We're going to try to scoop up a few more community members, and we'll begin the process to revise our student handbook language. We hope to have that wrapped up midday so we can have word approval, and it'll be ready for all of our registration. Early childhood and preschool education committee, we developed this, the members are Kevin Deal, Dana Bogathy, Deborah Harden, and the committee will be chaired by Principal Brandy Muha. They have begun their work. Architect firm of Leggett. Architect firm of Leggett has offered a couple of schools for site visit that they've recently completed to garner some ideas and inspiration. And we're looking at research best practices, divide and conquer with, you know, what the state has to offer, grants, looking who else runs programs. We expect to have a report out in June on the outcome of what preschool and early childhood education could look like in Troy Creek Schools as part of our overwinding facilities assessment study. National Blue Ribbon Celebration for Lake Prairie, save the date, May 18th. So on May 18th, we plan to load everybody at Lake Prairie up on a school bus, lock the doors over there, parade through town, and have a special celebration in the auditorium at Woll High School. Be about a 45-minute presentation. We're going to have a VIP list and some activities. So board members will get an official invitation if you are inclined to attend, but it's May 18th, approximately 9:30, 10 a.m. And then we have policy training, so we will offer some board policy training at the administrative center on Friday, going from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. And that's all I have for the superintendent's update, and I know that the board update is next. And so I saved something back for Kyle and/or Deborah to comment on our most recent district-wide leader team meeting with facility assessment, maybe communicate to the board what we discussed on that day.
It's nice to be met as a committee with the building, the schools, and the admin team. Patty, just discussing. Oh, Jason, yeah, Jason was here. Just discussing the building's needs, future projects. That future, that's where the preschool and early childhood education committee came from, talked about some needs at Three Creeks and.
Talk about Lake Prairie, you know, as far as the need for the added classrooms, what does it look like?
It's just really nice to be a part of that in here. Some of the stuff that we've all been talking about has board the needs and whatnot, but hearing from the administration.
I was just kind of fascinated seeing how you guys all kind of work together and collaborate and bring things around. That's just pretty kind of neat, I'd say. Nobody yelled at me, honey.
It was very clever, very well organized group.
Which projects are coming up?
Uh, not just, well, we just more needs, like Three Creeks, their need when it comes to picking up the, I don't know if you've ever been over there at pickup time, with a number of cars that are there to try and pick.
Sure, so that happens. They're all like that.
And then, yeah, the need for rooms at Lake Prairie. The growth of our school corporation, the possible need for rooms at all the buildings, preschool that we don't offer.
Part of the conversation with the Three Creeks is Beverly Estates is expanding, which is right behind Three Creeks. And one of the concerns is if they're not afforded lost service, if parents are more inclined to put their kids in a car and drive into school versus having the kids walk. So we already have some traffic congestion concerns and how that could potentially get even greater. So that's why we're trying to be a little bit proactive on what, how can we potentially.
You're saying they're going to connect their roads to our roads?
Beverly Estates has 93 additional units going in.
I understand that. But no, the roads aren't going to connect. It's just with that added drop-off cars. There already have 128 car drop-offs or pickups, so that's, you know, they're stacked up. So if we, they have additional houses, there's going to be additional cars for pickup. So what's that going to look like? So it's kind of how we're going to deal with that. So there's a lot of ideas on the road. All right, moving on. Under Board Regularity, this was number one, approve the minutes of the meeting held on February 10th, 2022. Number two, approve the minutes of the meeting held on February 24th, 2022. Is there any amendments or corrections to the meeting? Can I have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Payroll and approve the payroll claims. Got a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Personnel report, approve personnel report dated Thursday, March 10th, 2022.
Yeah, I've got the personnel report in front of you. I wanted to make special commentary on the safety and security director that we're recommending, Stacy Heems. We went through a rather extensive interview process. We garnered approximately 28 applications, narrowed that down for review to 20 applicants. We did some screening interviews for 12. We brought in, we selected six finalists, interviewed five of them, and we picked the candidate that we believe will do a standing job here in Troy Creek Schools. This candidate comes with background in law enforcement, with experience as serving as a school resource officer, and also has a background working in a psychiatric hospital and is already CPI trained and has great communication skills. All of the references were outstanding, and so it's our recommendation that we hire Stacy Heems for this position. And I just want to make a special mention of that on this personnel report.
So, Mo.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Number one, approve the Lake Prairie Elementary School, 2022, 2023, fifth grade students to be educated in an exclusive area for the fifth graders at the campus of Woll Middle School.
Yeah, so this has been a process that we've been looking at since back in August. We brought it to the board, we talked to administrators, we talked to staff, we talked to transportation. We brought it back to the board. The last stop was with the parents. And so recently, we had evening parent meeting with the current fourth grade parents here in this room at the middle school. We did a lot of educating about the challenge that we face. I think initially, as some parents came in, they were very reluctant to the idea of having their next year fifth grader being educated on the grounds of the middle school. As we, as questions were presented and we answered those questions, you could see that parents began to understand and see all of the options on the table. We paused, we went upstairs, we looked at the area that could potentially be that area for fifth graders. They basically have an exclusive area, their own restrooms, their own water fountains, their own classrooms. We talked about lunch schedules, how specials would work, the sharing of teachers, transportation, arrival dismissal. Parents had an opportunity to put post-it notes of their continuing questions. Parents even had some ideas to bring to the table. After that meeting, we went back to our leadership team. I'll link mentioned to the facilities meeting that Deborah and Kyle both attended. We reviewed again every option on the table, and the entire leadership team came that we believe this to be the best option to house our fifth graders here at Woll Middle School for next school year. I think it's important to note that we are still trying to see if there's a solution for any potential construction for the summer of 2023 to potentially get some space added on there. That's an unknown, there's no guarantee, but it's important to note we are looking at that. This recommendation is for the 22, 23 school year.
You're saying in 23, 24, they might go back?
If the stars align for that, it could be an option. If it's not, then we might need to look at a second year here at the middle school or what other options there might be. Part of that decision would be to see how does that first, how did the year go here? So we would come back around and have another discussion before we would make the recommendation for the 23, 24 year.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Number two, accept, accept the recommendation to award the bid to replace the fire alarm at Woll Middle School, Woll High School, Lake Prairie Elementary School to Union Technology Group of Alperazo, Indiana, in the amount of $142,563.
Yes, including your packets was our recommendation in our process here for this bid. Jason Wathen, our director of buildings and grounds here, worked with companies to procure these bids. We had two responsive bids. We reached out to three companies that could meet our specs that we required here. Our current systems are very proprietary and we only have one option for getting service on them, and it's very difficult to get them serviced because it's not a local company, it's not someone within Indiana, we have people that come out of state. And many other things are wrong with the systems or aging out in all of these three locations. So it's really becoming a hard time for us to get parts and replacements on. So we knew this was on the horizon. This is part of our Series 2022 bonds, construction bonds that we have issued, and we'll be closing on next week on the 17th. So this project was planned in there for these three locations. The price recommended in there from Union Technology for $142,563, and they're out of Alperazo here. It is a non-proprietary system that we're putting in here. It is about $7,000 higher than our budget that we put in there, which I'm happy with, given that prices now are really skyrocketing at a lot of these prices. This is not a bad deal to get $7,000 tied. As you can see, the other two bids that came through here and what they were, what they submitted were significantly higher for the same system, same work, everything. So you can see that we're getting a good deal with Union Technology. The next closest bid was about $34,000, $37,000 higher. So this is a good bid. Trial Electronics did bid, but then they withdrew from that saying, we just can't make this work, we're going to sell. So the work will be done over the summer for all three locations. And again, it's my recommendation that you approve this year. Jason, do you have anything to add?
No, it looks like you did a good job.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Can I have a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Number three, approve the amendment for the memorandum of the understanding between Troy Creek School Corporation and the Town of Woll for the water and sewer service to Lake Prairie Elementary School. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, so the initial memorandum of understanding was basically communicated a commitment for the partnership and the funding for the project. The board has since been going out, getting estimates, estimating the scope of work, getting the details. And that information is needed before then the intergovernmental agreement is constructed. And so what this amendment does is just basically extend the timeline to gather the facts, draft the intergovernmental agreement, and then bring it back to the board.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, career tech education program expansion, carpentry and human services.
Yeah, so if you recall the presentation the high school had with us not so long ago in regards to possible expanding the CTE program into the area of carpentry in the new area of the RDT building. Since that time, students have made their course requests, and we have enough students to run that program. We still need to take this topic to the teachers' union for discussion, and so we'll be doing that on Monday, March 14th. And then we will be coming back to the board pending outcome of that discussion and no concerns for a possible recommendation to add a full-time carpentry position to the high school roster. That'll be at the March 24th meeting. Human services, recently we've been going through the course request. We had enough to potentially offer a half-time teacher, and so we're still reviewing that. Again, we want to take that to the discussion meeting, but we very well may be asking on March 24th to approve a half-time human services and get that program launched and maybe develop that out into a full-time program. We believe that there is feasibility to hire and find someone for the half-time form of. So no action is needed, it's just for information and discussion.
Thank you. Just this is operations. Number one, approve the school agreement between PepsiCo Beverage Sales and Troy Creek School Corporation.
Yes, in conclusion, your packets was the draft version of the Pepsi contract. This morning, I received recommendations from our attorney to make some adjustments to that contract, all of which are, they don't change the terms of the contract, it's redirected language back to Indiana code specific to schools. This contract is used not only for schools, but it's also used for businesses. So the language is very open business kind of language. And the language that our attorney is recommending we put in here is just some safe words pointing back to Indiana codes in regards to what schools can actually do and not do. So we're just making sure we're getting those points in the contract. It doesn't change the term of the contract, which is a five-year term for Pepsi to sell their products here, and the list of products that are all viable by our wellness policy during school hours and the hour beyond the school day, the products that are in there are the ones that we like to have at our football games and it's crowd favorites here. It also includes a, what they typically call a marketing support. So it's $2,800 per year rebate back to the program. So the school will receive $2,800 each year, each term of that contract. And on top of it, we get 27% commission on any of the vending machines with them that are structured. Most of which are over at the high school. We have a few here and in staff lunches. Each of those funds, like the staff lunch machines, since the money is made from staff, it goes into a staff fund specifically for them, so that 27% goes back to the staff. Or recognition, congratulations things, each principal has a fund where they can use that, those funds to support their, their staff. The $2,800 goes into support our athletic programs because they are the primary source of all those sales. This is separate from our food service. Food service has separate accounts and set as chart walls. So it doesn't touch anything really during the school day or within our own programs. It's mainly athletics over at the high school for that marketing money. It's mainly athletics over at the high school for that marketing money. Uh, so I would recommend that you approve this, subject to the further changes here recommended by our attorney, which I'll, we're already in negotiations and working on.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion passes. Number one, approve the overnight study trip for Lowell High School marching students to participate in the Skills USA State Finals competition at the Indiana State Fairgrounds in Indianapolis, Indiana, from April eighth to the ninth of twenty twenty-two. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion passes. I'm going to read all the donations and then we'll do one. Number two, accept the donation of two basketballs from Keely Shea and Sean.
Silken.
Silken, for use at the, for use at Oak Hill Elementary School. Number three, accept the donation from Angela Burrows of Lowell, Indiana in an amount of twenty-eight dollars fifteen cents to help pay down negative student yield charges at Lowell High School. Number four, accept the donation from Shannon. Ms. Eric, yeah. Of Lowell, Indiana, in the amount of two hundred dollars to help fund the Lowell High School M O N H account. Number five, accept the donation from the Indiana Groceries Group LLC, Strangman Tilt of Highland, Indiana, in the amount of two hundred dollars to help support Lowell Elementary School robotics team. Number six, accept the donation from Gracor of Portage, Indiana in the form of welding rods valued at one thousand dollars to support Lowell High School welding program. Number seven, accept the donations from the Rensselaer Central Middle School Girls Basketball Team in the amount of one hundred thirteen dollars to help support Lowell Middle School Special Olympics. Number eight, accept the donation from Lowell Athletic Booster Club in the amount of one thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars to help fund the Lowell High School coaches against cancer boys basketball game on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Number nine, accept the donation from Three Cretes Elementary School PTO in the amount of one hundred seventy-nine dollars thirty-three cents to help fund the grade-two study trip.
Make the motion. I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion passes. Other information, spring break is the week of March twenty-eighth this year. So the next meeting will be on the twenty-fourth. So any other questions or comments?
I had a few comments. I, I received some correspondence from the middle school principal, Mrs. Cruzen. She sent an email that said, I just wanted to make sure you are, are aware of two bus drivers who went above and beyond for an LMS student yesterday. A student misplaced an instrument after school and they went out of their way to find it and get it to the student so that the student had a important evening band concert. I have great pride to work with such outstanding people who demonstrate kindness and compassion for students. The drivers were Andrea Blanford, who drives bus thirty, and Karen Martin, who drives bus eleven. That was some good news. Wednesday, March twenty-third is the Lowell FFA twenty twenty-two driver tractor school day. So gear up for that. We're giving special permission to the students who turn in permission slips to do that. And then I want to make a special shout-out to Mr. Joe Leeha for his thirty-two years of service in Troy Creek Schools.
All right, if there's no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting.